2014. We've been in special session since a little after 6:00 PM regarding economic development with an update from GAIN. We're now ready to begin our regular scheduled session, a few minutes late, so our apologies for delay. We'll begin this evening with an invocation by Mr. Will Urschel from Emmanuel Baptist Church, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance led by Councilwoman Mills. If you would join me in rising for the invocation and pledge, please.
Great, thank you. Let's go ahead and pray. Father, I thank you for this evening and I thank you for our council members and God, their willingness to serve us and our community, Father. And I know they've had a long day, so I just pray for endurance for them tonight. God, I just pray for wisdom for them, Father, and that they would not be a respecter of persons. Father, we know that everyone in our city has great value to you. You've known each individual here from eternity past, and we just pray that they would value them as well. Father, thank you for our firemen and policemen and those around the streets tonight, and just pray for wisdom for them, Father, as they're going through their work and providence of protection for them as well, God. And we thank you that they're willing to be out there and care for us, both right now at 7:00 o'clock and in the early morning time and through the rest of the day as well, too. And Father, thank you for Penny coming tonight and sharing about the green housing and the transition she has. We just pray for blessings for her and for her shelter as well, Father. Praise things in Jesus' name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, Mr. Urschel and Councilwoman Mills. May I have a roll call, please?
Vice President Long.
Here.
Councilman Cowp.
Here.
Councilman Lauterback.
Here.
Councilman Smith.
Here.
Councilwoman Mills.
Here.
Mayor Bayless.
Here.
President Engel.
Here.
May I have a motion, please, for approval of minutes from our joint special session with the City Council and Xenia Board of Education from October 21st?
So moved, Mr. President.
Moved by Councilman Lauterback. Second, please.
Second.
Second by Councilman Smith. Any discussion or question on these minutes, please? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Vice President Long.
Aye.
Councilman Cowp.
Abstain.
Councilman Lauterback.
Aye.
Councilman Smith.
Aye.
Councilwoman Mills.
Aye.
Mayor Bayless.
Aye.
President Engel.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Now finally, a motion, please, for the October 23rd regular session.
So moved, Mr. President.
Moved by Councilman Lauterback. Second, please.
Second.
Second by Councilman Smith. Any discussion or question on this final set of minutes? Seeing none, roll call.
Vice President Long.
Aye.
Councilman Cowp.
Aye.
Councilman Lauterback.
Aye.
Councilman Smith.
Aye.
Councilwoman Mills.
Aye.
Mayor Bayless.
Aye.
President Engel.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Now we have the opportunity for two special presentations this evening. I'd first like to call to the podium Director Penny Madre Johnson from the American Red Cross Chapter, Green County Housing Program Update.
Good evening, everyone. It's a pleasure to be here before City Council. It is a great pleasure. I am the Director of the Green County Housing Program of the American Red Cross. We're located at 1080 East Main Street here in Xenia. That emergency and transitional housing program was started in 1990. We have been in business for 24 years. I've been the Director for 14 years, and we've been in constant use since our opening. And I'm here to discuss about the American Red Cross and transitions that have been going on within the organization. Before I do that, I want to thank City Council for your long support of the Green County Housing Program. We've enjoyed your support down through the years, and many families have utilized our services and have moved on into permanent housing and become very successful and a great part of our community. So I want to thank you for that support, and particularly, about seven years ago, we became before City Council with Reed Madden, myself, and another Director of the Red Cross asking for your support in establishing a transitional housing program at our very same site. That program was very successful because of your support. We did get, as you know, a federal home loan grant as well as Ohio Housing Finance Grant capital funds to build that important transitional shelter, and it's been in constant use. We have, gosh, housed over 60-some families in that shelter. We only planned really to house 14 families a year, but annually, we've been housing really more than that, and they've been very successful. Families only have to stay in that shelter where they're allowed to for six months, but usually, three or four months is all they need in order to get housing through Green Metropolitan Housing Authority and move on with their lives. So I just want to thank you for that. And speaking of transition, I wanted to share with you that the American Red Cross is going through major transitional realignment and change throughout the nation. And in our region, the Dayton Area Chapter of the American Red Cross had two very special housing programs for the homeless. The one in Dayton was called Family Life Living Center, and the Red Cross, due to the realignment and transition of the national office, has actually spun off that program under another housing program called Homeful. This realignment is happening all over the country. The Red Cross is actually focusing in on their core missions, which is serving the military wherever there are around the world. They're strong here at Wright-Patterson Air Force Base. The American Red Cross will continue to provide health and safety services, CPR, first aid, and classes, and also care for citizens who are homeless due to a major disaster. Programs, especially programs such as ours, the housing program, are being looked at and spun off because of mission creep. And that's what my CEO shares with us, that the mission creep, the Red Cross is involved in so many different human service organizations that they wanted to really just refocus on their core mission. I'm also been told from my supervisor that our housing program that serves the chronic homeless is the last in the country to be spun off from the National American Red Cross. So our advisory committee, we have a strong volunteer advisory committee, and our Chair is here today, Marlene Elliott, a strong volunteer who many of you know here, who's a strong advocate for the homeless. Through her leadership and my support, we advocated through the Dayton Area Chapter to establish our own 501(c)(3) to assume the project. And we're very excited about this project. We've gotten an awful lot of support. We have recently received our Articles of Incorporation. We've moved on and gotten our EIN number. We also have established a wonderful board. We're real excited about that board, and we have two members of our new board here with me today. Professor Solomon Hill from Central State University is here in the audience, as well as a professor from Cedarville University, Julie Fury Kuhn. She does a lot of international placement of social work students throughout the world, and we're so excited. We've had a lot of her students and Professor Solomon's students in our program, as well as so many other students from around the area. So, but we're here today just to share and update City Council about this transition and what our plans are. To this date, we have served individually 270 individuals in both emergency and transitional housing in our program site. We want to continue to do that. We plan on doing that. Our plan is to certainly go forward with our nonprofit status with the IRS, receive that letter, that status, and then subcontract under the American Red Cross Dayton Area Chapter up until 2016, and then assume the leadership and continue this great work in this community. Again, we valued your support. Our families have been very successful because of your support, and we want to continue to keep this program in the community and keep moving forward. If Council is interested in giving us a letter of support, we'd be glad to receive a letter if you're interested in doing that. We did, when we did establish our transitional housing program, did receive letters of support and resolution from this Council in order to move forward with those plans. So I'd be glad to entertain any questions at this time, but again, I appreciate the opportunity to come before you and to share with you what is going on internally with the Red Cross and our future plans with the housing program at 1080 East Main Street.
Thank you very much. Any questions from my colleagues or comments, please?
I have one.
Please.
Your housing program there on East Main Street.
Yes.
You say you have 14 families at a time there?
We can, we have, well, actually, we have 13 housing units, and sometimes we double up and we'll have more than that within certain units. We can't double up in our transitional housing program, but we can in emergency. So there are times when we can have more than that. We could have as large as 25 families when we double up.
Is there a waiting list at times?
Currently, we have five families seeking entry into our program, and we're always turning families over. Those five, we are in the process of interviewing them and bringing them on in shortly.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments, please?
I just want to commend you. I think you've done an outstanding job through the years, and you certainly know I support you. I have sat on their committee on two board meetings that they've had, their organizational meetings, and so I just wish you well.
Thank you so much, Mayor. We appreciate your support.
Thank you very much. We appreciate all that the American Red Cross does, and we're certainly glad to have you in our community. So, thank you very much, ma'am.
Thank you.
Okay, our second special presentation this evening, our Development Director, Mr. Steve Brodsky, with our totally economic development update, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. Try to be brief. I know there's a lot on the agenda tonight. First, as far as economic development leads go, since our last report, we have received 10 leads either from the state or the Dayton Development Coalition. Seven of those were for buildings. We were able to respond with one, with the Super Value Building. Unfortunately, the others had requirements we could not meet, either due to building size, ceiling height requirements, a couple required rail. One lead was very specific, the building had to be constructed after the year 2000. We also received three site requests. We were able to respond to two. The other one did require rail. One of the two that we responded to is actually a local lead. It did not come through the state, it came through the Dayton Development Coalition. From what we've been able to tell, we are one of four communities in this region that responded, and I think we have a very competitive response that we were able to put forward. I will say, too, that especially on that, there was a very detailed RFI, or Request for Information. Sometimes when we get these leads, they simply want the most basic data. The state has a database of our buildings and sites in what's called Ohio One Site, and usually they just say, "Just submit the buildings and we'll get the information from there." Sometimes, though, the companies will have a lot of information they want. In this case, it was very detailed information about regional workforce, about utility costs and capacity, and those do take quite some time to put together, although in this case we were given four days to do so. Some of the industrial programs and activities, I am very pleased that in early October, DPNL announced that they are creating a certified site program. This is something that the state has talked about for a number of years but has yet to develop, and I will commend DPNL for taking the initiative to create this themselves. What this does is it allows communities to bring their sites and buildings, in some cases through a very rigorous process, to determine, it looks at infrastructure, it looks at due diligence reports, a number of different things, and if you meet all of the criteria, McCollum Sweeney, which is a nationally-known site certification and site selection consulting firm, will say that you are a certified shovel-ready site. What this means to site consultants or to businesses is, we know that if we go to this site, we will be able to start construction, and we're not going to have to wait for all of the infrastructure to be extended. We don't have to start doing the environmental reports, the geotechnical reports, those have already been done. Now, we were able to cert- get two sites through the first cut, the county-owned OVCH site and the Arnovitz site in the Xenia Industrial Park. I will tell you that while we made the first cut, there is going to be some work that is needed to make the next level, and that includes doing some of those due diligence reports, such as the environmental, because it has to be recent, and in both of those sites, the environmental reports are well over 10 years old. There also has been no recent geotechnical reports done, and those need to be done. The county has expressed a willingness certainly to do their property. We've been in discussions with Mr. Arnovitz, and he is willing to invest money to get his site certified. He has asked for some assistance, and in the very near future, we plan to come back to Council with recommendations for a pre-development grant program that can help cover some of those costs. We're not talking large amounts of money, I mean, we're thousands of dollars, not tens of thousands of dollars, but obviously, that is a large cost for those property owners, and we want to be able to assist them. Also, in September, I was in Chicago at the IMTS Show, or the International Manufacturer and Tooling Show, met with 10 different site selection consultants, provided them various types of information about the city. In one case, we had one that was dealt very specifically with logistics, and we were able to provide them a lot of information, not only about our transportation advantages, but Xenia was actually included in a study that Montgomery County did called the St. Ange Study, that looked at, specifically at the logistics industry and how the Dayton region fits, and Xenia was one of the communities included in that, so we provided them with that information, and then followed up with some additional information. We also met with one of our local companies in the Xenia Industrial Park. They were trying to sell products to a very large Chinese manufacturer and wanted some assistance, so we spent most of the day with this company and the Chinese manufacturer, trying to convince them that the company had the wherewithal and the ability to meet their needs and that the city was behind them. As you might guess, Chinese companies are very used to having government intervention or involvement in just about any project, so to have someone from the local government there is actually something that they look for, and we were certainly happy to provide that. The same company has also been trying to get some of their product into the Israel markets. To do so, they've been actually working with an agent in Europe. There is a group called the Dayton Region Israeli Trade Alliance, or DORITA. Again, this is a program that is managed by Montgomery County, but it is a regional program. We were able to hook them up with the folks from DORITA. They came out, spent most of a morning with this company, and as a result, have taken their product information and given it to the DORITA agent in Israel, and that person is now working on behalf of a company here in Xenia, trying to get their products sold to manufacturers in Israel to open. Partially as a result of that, we've also had conversations with this particular manufacturer about the need, their need to either expand in place or build a new facility, and certainly we want them to do that in Xenia. They've been very happy with the assistance that we've been able to provide them over a number of years, and that is their first preference is to stay here. Some other things, obviously, you're very well aware of the potential redevelopment of Town Square, both the former Fullmore Market and former Kmart. We have been working with developers for both projects, again, providing a lot of information to them, a lot of meetings with them and others, and we're very cautiously optimistic that those projects will happen. Certainly, there's no such thing as a done deal until it's actually done, but we are moving forward very aggressively with both of those projects. We've met with another manufacturer, actually, a industrial services company here in Xenia that is looking to expand, and we are trying to assist them in those expansion efforts, as well as a local company that is just outside of our borders and may be interested in annexing at least a portion of their property into the city so we can help them with some infrastructure. Two new downtown restaurants that we have been working with, one is One Bistro, that is actually a nonprofit group, but outstanding food. They've been working with the folks at Tors Independence, and we hope very shortly that they will be on Main Street. There's another restaurant called Solar Flare. They plan to be open here within the next month. We've been working with them, trying to help them secure some financing. I believe their sign is already up. Looking forward to it. It's comfort food, but with a flair, some, probably some menu items that are pretty unique for Xenia and actually unique for the region, so hopefully, we will all be out to support these two restaurants. Another thing that we did, spent quite a bit of time with our schools recently. As you may know, that they were trying to get their bond rating upgraded, provided a tremendous amount of information, met with bond counsel for most of an afternoon, so they could be as prepared as possible with pertinent information to try to do that. They were able to refinance some bonds and save taxpayers well over $1 million. We have also been, had several meetings with some partners, both local and from other parts of the state, that are looking at one of our larger downtown buildings. I really can't say which one in this venue, but we're excited about the possibility. There could be two businesses moving into this particular building. There'll be a lot of work to make that happen, including a number of different programs on the state and federal level. Some of these are quite complicated, so we have also had some preliminary meetings with a firm that specializes in that type of subsidy layering and are trying to get something set up for the next couple of weeks so that we can get more detailed information and find out how we can do this and do it in such a way that the fees and costs of applying for those programs, that can be pretty significant, can be rolled into the project cost and not have to be up fronted. Lastly, we have been working for the last several months on acquiring the properties around the water treatment plant through a FEMA grant that was secured about a year ago. I believe later on the agenda tonight is a piece of legislation that would authorize us to do the first closing, and we are working with the other property owner, getting closer to agreement with that particular property owner to get several properties that he owns. Again, the whole idea of this is to secure, to purchase those properties, help relocate their residents, and then demolish them, primarily for security for the water treatment plant, but also because that is such a flood-prone area, quite frankly, to help these folks not have to suffer floods. Also included, just for your information, some brief information about our current unemployment status, so glad to take any questions.
Questions from my colleagues, please. Councilman?
Thank you very much. The H&amp;A property, I know we're actively marketing that. I mean, with all that gypsum out there, I mean, do you think that in any way negatively pro? I mean, does that have any negative effect, marketing that property?
I don't think so.
I mean, you know, if somebody comes out and looks at it and they see that it's being used, or?
Well, and again, the agreement we have, that Council approved, you know, we were very, very upfront with the folks from Hammond, that because we are marketing that property, you know, if we found a prospect that wanted to move quickly, they would need to be able to move their product off with a 30-day notice, and they agreed to that. So certainly, we can point to a written agreement that says this stuff will be off in 30 days if you need to move more quickly than that. But no, I don't believe it is. If anything, in a way, it's enhancing it because they have done a very good job of maintaining that property, keeping it mowed and looking neat, so.
As a point of clarification, given the pending litigation related to that site, we suspended any active marketing on the site, noting that, you know, that we need to see that process through until we can really engage a robust marketing effort.
Now that said, I can tell you that we are meeting later in the week with a firm that specializes in brownfield redevelopment, and that is one of the sites that they want to see. So we're not aggressively marketing it, as Mr. Merriman said, there are some activities to try to get that property moving.
Couple other quick ones. The dental office that was supposed to go in at Miami Trail, I mean, they worked on that building for a couple weeks, it seemed like, pretty heavily, and now you see like nothing happening there. Is that still?
To the best of my knowledge, they're still planning on going there. I'm not aware, have not heard of any issues that they're having. You know, a lot of the work that you saw was interior demolition and whatnot. If that is done, my guess is they're probably just doing the interior finishing, and you're just not seeing the activity.
Last year, National League of Cities, we signed a contract with a company to do four videos and an app for smartphones. I asked about that a couple different times, and it cost us nothing.
Nothing. Those videos were completed and forwarded to our IT department. I'm not sure if they're having issues getting them up on the website or what the deal, but those have been completed, yes.
And as far as, you know, we talk about marketing with GAIN and whatnot, I mean, you know, that, I really like the idea of the smart app because there, I mean, there was so much stuff that was tied to that app that, I mean, literally, somebody riding through our city on their bicycle could get on that app and get a map of the bike path if that's what they wanted. And, I mean, it wasn't going to cost anything, anything to the city to get that app, and I mean, you know, to me, that's a big deal. It cost us nothing. We were one of 12 cities in the country that got that provided to us free last year, and I just don't know that we followed it through to make sure that that happened.
We can add that to our follow-up.
Thank you.
And then, I know you had talked, not so much you, but you had talked about having something for us. I know we met with GAIN now tonight. Is there going to be a follow-up meeting to that on what our goals are for 2015 with economic development, where we're going to go, what staff wants from Council? I mean, you know, as Dale had mentioned, you know, I think everybody sitting here, economic development is number one. You know, without the marketing, without the baby steps that we've taken for 18 months, we're not going to get the jobs, jobs, jobs that Dale wants, you know, but what's our next step in that process?
During the City Manager Report tonight, I was, had intended on bringing up what we would like to do is schedule a work session, I think, taking into consideration Councilman Lauterback's feedback, which, you know, I think is a really valid point. On an important topic, we want to make sure that we're providing adequate time for thorough presentation and then discussion. We would like to have a work session. We're entering that time of year where it's difficult because of holidays and whatnot. Our desire would be to have something within the first couple weeks of December, because we want to make sure that Council has some time to think about that, make sure we're incorporating into our final budget that we'll bring back as a temporary budget to Council at the second meeting in December. So if Council's amenable to looking at an alternative night outside of a regular session night, that would certainly be okay with us. We can identify what that would be. Again, another point I was going to bring up tonight, the discussion that we had tentatively scheduled for the November 25th meeting, which would be the presentation and discussion on the city facility project. Councilman Cowp is not going to be available for that meeting and made a request for us to consider looking at rescheduling that meeting. I know there was discussion with Councilwoman Mills in Barack about rescheduling that meeting, so we were tentative in looking at December 3rd for that. So as we're thinking about where that economic development discussion fits into the schedule, bear in mind that we would look at rescheduling that for December 2nd? December 2nd. So is there, I mean, if it's the pleasure of Council, we can look at, you know, look at an alternative, you know, meeting date for a standalone work session.
I mean, I brought it up to City Manager earlier this week, or maybe it was last week. You know, I knew the topic tonight would be a big topic. I know the city building will be a big topic. You know, you can't squeeze it in between before a council meeting and have adequate question time. You know, there- and have adequate question time. You know, they're probably both two-hour subjects that, you know, we used to have Saturday morning work sessions once in a while. I'm not opposed to that in order to have adequate time to talk about the things that take a lot of time to talk about. Whatever the pleasure of the rest of council is, but I agree with Councilman Lauterback wholeheartedly that we need to give some of these topics adequate time and adequate question time in order to, you know, thoroughly discuss them.
Colleagues, views?
Saturday morning works for me, if that's the pleasure.
Thank you.
I work Saturday mornings, so I'd be able to, happy for what he wants to do.
Councilwoman, Mayor?
I'm okay with another evening from 6:00 to 10:00, if that's what it takes. I mean, I'm just saying, I think we need to give them adequate time, whenever it is, whether it's an evening or a weekend.
And I agree with that, you know, adequate time is very important to make sure everybody does get their questions answered, because you, the best thing to have is knowledge. So the more we are able to know and learn, the better it is. As far as the Braca meeting, my co-chair of Braca was going to lead that session for me anyway, so I will not be at that meeting night. It is not available for me.
And I'm good most, most times. Saturday works.
Just schedule it.
I think it's going to be very difficult to find a time for everyone, and I do realize that. You know, the majority needs to be here. If all of us can't be, that is understandable, and that's why we have Tino to take our minutes, and we will get the information that way, plus we are able to talk with our colleagues and our appointed officials.
Sunday at 4:30 to 6:30 a.m. Sounds like it might work.
I need to tie through the morning hours.
I would suggest let us seek an evening rather than a Saturday morning, but if that is unavailable, please coordinate with council as to your suggested dates for a two-hour session for each of these blocks. And I would, I would hope that we could gain at least six of the seven of us here for these two important topics. That would be what I would ask as the best marker that we could possibly hope for. Five of seven might be acceptable if no other options.
Thursdays, I mean, we have council meetings on Thursdays, so my Thursdays are pretty much open.
Okay. We can certainly start earlier. We could start as early as 4:30. Counselman.
I think we've already agreed to televise the City Hall. I would like to televise the GAIN meeting, too, to make it more transparent to the public. Would that be a problem with anybody?
What I would like to see, just in general, for these types of meetings, is as much read-ahead material as possible with the staff's recommendations outlined, such that all of us are in the same frame regarding coming in. Even if we have a myriad of questions to be asked, it's at least very clear what the staff's view is, their views of the positive and negative factors with each course of action, and ultimately, what course of action they recommend, such that we are prepared to make maximum use of that time and not do excessive exploring on all sorts of options.
Would council like to vote on that motion, too, or do you want to just by consent on televising the work session with economic development?
Consent would work.
I think we already did.
You did on the city building, but I think Councilman Lauterback has made a recommendation to televise the GAIN meeting, so on economic development. So if there's...
I don't see any...
Just by policy, normally, we would have four votes to approve that particular televising of the meeting, of the work session, or are you assenting to that without voting, I guess is my question?
Consent.
Consent.
Thank you.
So noted.
Anything else, please?
Just to Steve, I appreciate this report. I liked it better than all the statistics we went with, but the specifics were great. So thank you, sir.
I had one very specific question for you. As we're reading through, and I applaud the idea of getting these things into a bin, if you will, that will allow developers to come and be confident in what they can do with a property. For myself and probably a number of other council members, we make note of Phase 1 environmental and basic geotechnical reports, and you noticed, noted that there's a lifetime issue on those reports. You had noted that one was about 10 years old. What is an acceptable lifetime of these reports, as we consider, obviously, the financial aspects of more and more of these sites being graded, what's going to be our cycle time for having to do these reports to keep them current?
What McCallum Sweeney has told us is that those reports essentially are good for five years, as will the certification. They would require recertification every five years. I will say that, especially on those reports. Obviously, the first one is always going to be more expensive. Updating them is not nearly as expensive, doesn't take as much work, especially on the geotechnical end. You know, unless another glacier happens to come through Xenia, the soil is what the soil is, and that doesn't require a whole lot of updating. The environmental, obviously, there can be a lot of different things that affect that.
Sure. Thank you. So I would recommend to you highly that, you say we have two of these working at the present time. What's our envisioned stable of these kind of ones, and what's a notional schedule so that within your budget planning, we can plan for X number of these a year, and then X number to be recertified every cycle? Thank you. Good job. At this time, we have an opportunity for audience comments. If anyone would care to come and address the city of Xenia this evening, we'd welcome you to do so. Please step to the podium, provide us your name and address. Limit your comments to three to four minutes, please.
Good evening, Mr. President. My name is Thomas Scrivens. I reside at 725 Lexington Avenue here in the city. I rise this evening to, not to bury Caesar, but to praise him. Like to thank the city manager and his staff for following up on getting some of the alleys cleaned up and getting some of the debris, the old tires and all that removed. It's a very good job, sir. We thank you. And had the, our sector of the city had their meeting with the city planner the other evening. I was a bit chagrined that some of our representatives who profess to represent all the people weren't there to at least have some face time and hand time with the people, but we have three other opportunities for that. One item that was not discussed, because we felt that the city planner wasn't a person to discuss that with, was the matter of minority hiring in the city. We're quite taken aback that, you know, we've pretty much been flatlining on minority hiring. I've been following the EEO numbers for the last 20 years, and if it was EKG, it'd definitely be a flatline, be a beat every now and then, but it was a definite arrhythmia. So we'd like to see the city have a plan of action that is really affirmative to increase minority hiring. When we look across each department, we see ones and zeros, mostly zeros, and that's just not representative of who we are here in the city. So we asked the city to take a serious look at their practices and the bottom line. Bottom line is, just ain't nobody. So I don't know how you feel about that as a councilperson, but as a city person, you know, you should have some type of reticence about that. One other thing I'd like to say, tend to, we call it a home-going service, generally call it a funeral, of a longtime Xenia resident, Mr. Robert W. Guyer. And hate to see the gentleman go back home, but I've been knowing Mr. Guyer and his family since the fourth grade, and very good people, quintessential Xenia folk, and we hated to see him go. But we all have to go that way. Just like to say, you guys are on the job, and we intend to keep your feet to the fire, to make sure you do the job to represent all the Xenians. And thank you, Mr. President, for your time, and the council for your time. God bless you guys.
Thank you. Counselman.
Could I respond to that?
Yes, sir.
I'm not a big fan of affirmative action. I don't care if you're black, white, yellow, or purple. If you're qualified to do the job, you're going to get the job. So that is, you ask position of a councilman. That is my position as a councilman. Again, regardless, if you're qualified to do the job, you should get the job. I know that might not be popular with you, but that's my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. City Manager, on this particular topic, I am not nearly as fresh on our hiring trends and practices, and I don't imagine that a number of our other council members are as well. If you could provide us a data sheet on that, just for the last, say, five years, that would be interesting for us, as I would like to see that.
I've had, and we can certainly provide that, I've had at least two different conversations, one with the HR director and one with the Fire and Police Chief, literally within the last month on the issue. There's a substantial issue within public safety in particular. We're not seeing, and of course, you know, these are civil service processes.
Yes.
So, you know, it's not as though it's just a random process. It's a recognized series of events, including testing and so forth. And so, you know, it's, you know, there is a little bit more effort that needs to go into outreach in terms of getting people to engage in that process because of the civil service system. Our EEO plan is out of date, and it is. It's something that we need to focus on. We've had a lot of other issues that have arisen, and, you know, issues that even this week have come out related to human resources. So we're challenged because we're a staff of one in that department. I think it's something we need to look at. I wholeheartedly agree with Councilman Lauterback's disposition personally. We need to hire people that are going to serve and represent the people to the greatest of their ability and provide a good, you know, practical value for the community. But at the end of the day, we certainly, you know, we value some diversity in our organizational population because it brings different perspective. So we can certainly produce some information kind of outlining more.
And I thank you. Those points you made right at the beginning were exactly what I was thinking of, is it's not merely a matter of, for the larger audience, some of our perhaps most coveted positions are positions which you must go through the civil service process and test for, and it would just be interesting to see, again, that matter of record of number of applicants, that sort of thing, by different ethnic group. Certainly, if you don't test for those, you can't get those jobs. So I would just like to see some hard numbers for that, and would greatly appreciate that. Counselman.
Thank you very much. Having served Xenia civil service for nine years, you know, I'm very familiar with the whole debate on the subject. We have always reached out to Wilberforce, Central State, Wright State, Cedarville College, I mean, whenever we have any testing. I don't know what's happened to that in the past, but just, I just actually had a conversation with Dr. Jackson tonight, and I think the whole relationship between the city and Central State is improving. The city manager's meeting with them on a regular basis, and I think the more interaction we get out there, the more, you know, they start saying, hey, look, this is happening right here in your own backyard. I mean, she talked about promoting Xenia and people in Xenia not even going, you know, out to their university that graduated from their university. But the more dialogue we have with Central State, to get those qualified people, you know, to take our civil service test, I think you'll start seeing those numbers change. Because at the end of the day, you know, we need educated people to fill these positions. And, you know, we're taking those steps and always taking those steps. I just don't know that Central State has done much with that information, and I think that is changing. So hopefully, in the future, maybe we'll see things changing, you know, the way you would like to see it change.
Mayor?
And I do know, I served on a panel at, well, I was invited to give a welcome at Wilberforce University this year, and so our, well, the Fire Chief and Police Chief, their representatives went, and they did make a plea at that time for the same thing, to get more minorities involved in the process. And so there is an awareness and same questions that I've had as well. But you have to take the test. In some cases, that's, and so I think the recruiting efforts are better than what they used to be, maybe.
I think Councilwoman first.
Well, and I'm going to jump gears a little bit. As far as the community outreach and not getting, be able to meet the community, this was part of the X play, and it was strictly for the areas of the community, and all of council was asked to attend their community one. And I have spoke with a member of the community, and I've also spoke with Marcia about, if I would have known that we would have been looked upon in a ill manner for not attending, I would have surely attended. But as we were directed was to attend our area, because that's where we know what is needed, right there in our own backyards. And so, and I said, oh, I'm so sorry, because, you know, we do care about the community as a whole, and I just want to put that out on the record also, that, you know, if it was a true community, and, you know, it's supposed to talk strictly about recreation, and, you know, I know things get off-topic at times, but, you know, that was something else that I just wanted to clear up.
Thank you. Counselman.
I guess my point is, there's organizations across this country, in cities in this county, if you're Hispanic, if you're black, if you're a woman, if you're any type of a minority, you get extra credit. You move up on the list. I am strongly opposed to that. Once again, and I'll go on record as saying, if you qualify for the job, you should have the job. It shouldn't be based on your race. And that's just maybe a strong statement for some people, but I think it's a fair statement. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments, please?
Seeing none, moving to reports of committees. Councilwoman Mills, please, Board for Recreation Arts and Cultural Activities.
Thank you very much. We are finishing up our season of activities. I'm very excited to say Braca sponsors 12 activities a year, and all of the activities are free to the community, and they are very much community activities. Right now, we are focusing on Hometown Christmas, which is the second Saturday of December, the 13th. Wanted to make sure I got the right date. And it is from 4:00 to 8:00 p.m. The activities will be in downtown Xenia. Towards Independence will host a flurry of activities. We are going to have the String Benders, which is a great group of people who play a lot of bluegrass and other materials. We are also going to have, and that starts at 4:00. At 5:00 o'clock, Mr. Ritchie, who was a recipient of the Disney Teacher of the Year Award, he is going to put on a science show. So again, it's family entertainment, so please come down and watch Mr. Ritchie and the Chem Club kids put on a science show at 5:00. At 6:00 o'clock, we are going to have United American AME Church to come, and the choir's going to sing, so we're going to have a wonderful time of the choir singing. And then, 7:00 to 8:00 o'clock is going to be the Xenia Ensemble. So there will, again, will be singing and dancing. So we tried to hit across the board of everybody's interest that there's something for everyone going on down there. Also, the War Jewelry, which is women-at-risk. This is jewelry that is made by women in other parts of the world that is enslaved in many different forms, and this is their way out, their ticket out, so we encourage you to come and support that. There's also the silent auction for the downtown merchants, so that is another thing to come and support. There's going to be bingo, just something to do, to have fun as a family, play some bingo, have some fun. There's going to be baskets raffled off. The baskets are going to be, the proceeds from those baskets are going to buy Christmas for people who don't have it, and we're looking strictly at Towards Independent clients and nursing home residents that don't get anything, that they just don't have anyone to get them anything for Christmas. So that is what those proceeds are going to go for. So that is what those proceeds are going to go for. And we are going to have some puzzles and an activity area that if you just want to set and visit with some friends you saw, come on down and do that. But that's all going on at Torres Independence. There's things going on all over the community. Santa is going to be down at Xenia Station this year, and he is going to have a lot of activities around him. So we suggest that you start at one end of town and work your way all over town, because it's going to be a great, great time. We are also finishing up our tree foliage photo contest, and so that was very exciting. We had a great turnout for that, and it's wonderful to know that people take notice of the beauty around them, and especially in their own hometown. We are also finishing up with the Bloom of Xenia. And with that, we are getting ready to clean out the pots and get them ready for our winter greenery and such to get prepared for Hometown Christmas. And if you would like to purchase a banner, we are in the process of sponsoring a banner for $147. You can purchase a banner. They are guaranteed for three years, but our banners have been hanging proudly for five years. It's a one-time fee, and as long as that banner is good, but we guarantee them for three years, they will be going up throughout town. And there is many opportunities for groups, families, businesses to be able to do that. So if you have any questions, please call City Hall on that. I'm trying to think of everything we talked about. The basketball program is starting up, so that is for the Recreation Basketball League. So that is another thing that we are offering, and I think that's about it.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, that's a lot.
That's a lot. I think in regards to the banners, one of the things you might not have mentioned that some of the newer people listening might not know is, they can be personalized with a family name-
Absolutely.
... or a group's name, or that sort of thing. So your interest is not just making the city more attractive with those banners, but also you can advertise your group that you may belong to, or you can just let your fellow citizens know that the Mills are pleased to live in Xenia, Ohio, that sort of thing.
Correct.
And they are truly a great site throughout the city as they hang.
Yes.
Any questions or comments for Councilwoman Mills and Braca, please? Second, yes?
I had one more thing that I'm going to say, is that the movie in the park series is extended, and this coming month, in December 5th, we're going to be showing Frozen. So all those little girls, get your Frozen outfits together and mark that date on the calendar and come and join us. And that's at Faith Community Church. That is our winter site for movies in the park. And that begins at 6:30, and the movie starts at 7:00. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Smith, Traffic Commission, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. Xenia City Traffic Commission met on Monday, November 3rd. We had one member absent, however, we did have a quorum. We had a very short agenda that night, just two things on new business. One was the discussion of left turns when you're going southbound on Detroit versus the traffic light. Resident thought there was some danger when you turn left. When you have a dedicated arrow, that the oncoming traffic does not always see that. However, that's really not just prevalent to that intersection, that's every intersection anywhere. So that was discussed, but felt that there was really nothing at this time to deal with that. And then, a simple request, Xenic Christian Schools, just requesting to look at possibly revamping some of their school zone lights or signals down there and signs on South 68 there. Other than that, that's all we had at that meeting. We do have some stuff on the agenda for tonight, though.
Okay, thank you very much. Anything for Councilman Smith and Traffic Commission, please? Would now be an appropriate time. Is there an update on the North Detroit Street and Kinsey Road?
Mr. Engle?
Area? I've had a number of people ask about that.
Unfortunately, this is, when we went into this project, like we've said 1,000 times over, this is an ODOT let project.
Yes.
ODOT administering the project. What the holdup is out there, next time anybody's out there to look, there's a large, really thick AT&amp;T line that goes diagonal from Dockton down to Shell, and ODOT has been unsuccessful in getting anybody from AT&amp;T to come out there and even look to see what they're going to do with it. Well, the problem is, it's mounted to the old traffic signal poles, so once they're removed to go to the mast arms, now you have a greater sag where we're worried about semi-trucks that could clip that thing. So really, it's in the hands of getting AT&amp;T out there. You know, there's only so much scream and holler than we can do at ODOT, admittedly.
So it's ODOT's task essentially?
It's totally in their, that's totally in their ballgame right now.
Any suggestions, other than being unhappy with ODOT?
We are truly at the mercy. You know, you're talking between AT&amp;T, which is a major corporation, and ODOT. We're at their mercy at this point.
Okay. Thank you very much. Mayor Bayless, Board of Zoning Appeals, please.
Thank you. Board of Zoning Appeals met on October 27th. We had three reports. First was an appeal of an August 19, 2014, city issued notice of violation of the city's registration of vacant commercial and industrial buildings code at 42 West Second Street and at 58 South Detroit Street. And this was filed by Ferguson and Ferguson LLC for the property owner, William Donjies. The item was tabled. And then second was a variance request to allow construction of a six-foot-tall wood and vinyl privacy fence in a front yard of a double frontage lot at 1533 June Drive, filed by property owners Sam and Susan Butler. That was approved. And then finally, a request for a conditional use permit to allow plumbing contracting business at 113 South Detroit Street, and this is a former AHOB building, and that was filed by Chris Adams. That was approved.
Thank you very much. Anything for Mayor Bayless and Board of Zoning Appeals, please? Seeing none, moving to items from City Council and Mayor. Do any of my colleagues have something to bring before the group this evening, please? Councilman?
Just one reminder to the public that we're still looking for volunteers for some of our commissions. I know Planning and Zoning has a volunteer opening right now. We could really use a commissioner to serve in that very important role. Please send your applications to the City Clerk's office.
I want to jump on that. Some of the openings, one family took out two members of our board because they moved out of the city limits. So just want to make that clear, that there's a reason why some of these things are open. You have to live in the city limits to be able to apply so.
And that would be civil service and planning and zoning? Or, excuse me, go ahead.
We have a opening that's going to be coming open on the Economic Development Advisory Board also. One of our members is still living in the city, but will be moving outside the city limits in the near future. So we would be entertaining any applications for that position also.
Thank you very much.
And then we had, we had an opening on the Board of Zoning Appeals, and I received a letter today, someone very interested, so that may be taken care of.
Very good. So, citizens of Xenia, whatever your interest is in the city, it appears that there is an opportunity for you to serve and to contribute to how the city is managed from those various boards and commissions. So please take the time to consider becoming involved in that. Those of us that have served on that would tell you that it is a very worthwhile thing to do for a two- to four-year period. Anything else from my colleagues, please? I have one item. We, as a council, have been in conversation for some time regarding employee policies and such within the city, and we have reached a consensus on that, such that, colleagues, I will be making two motions this evening to clarify council's intent regarding time keeping and pay disbursements for city employees. Regarding the first motion I'll make, is I would move that city employees shall only charge time and receive compensation from the city of Xenia for time spent working tasks that are exclusive and organic to the city. May I have a second, please?
Second?
Second by Councilman Lauterback. Any discussion or question on this motion, please? Councilman?
Can you read that motion again, please?
"I move that city employees shall only charge time and receive compensation from the city of Xenia for time spent working tasks that are exclusive and organic to the city."
I guess, I mean, all this, all this has come about because of our law department. We have pending inquiry with Columbus on contracts that our law director has in place currently. And, you know, whether I agree or disagree with what some of our city employees may be doing currently, or what our law director may be doing currently, I think it's imperative for us to wait until we get clarification back from Columbus, or we meet with our law director to find out what we're about to pass, how that's going to impact not only the city of Xenia, but the cities of Bellbrook and all the townships that fall under that county contract. Prior councils to this one gave our law director the ability to sign contracts with the city of Bellbrook and Green County. At that time, they knew our law director was going to be working on those contracts. And what concerns me is the wording of that, and what kind of position that's going to put the city of Xenia, our law director, the city of Bellbrook, and the county in come January 1st.
Councilman?
You know, I don't really care what prior councils have done. Now that we have, we've discovered some facts that I did not know, I'm assuming the rest of the council didn't know. Now that we've discovered some facts, that I have a fiduciary responsibility to the taxpayers, and I am not going to support a city employee getting paid to work regardless of a contract, a city employee getting paid to work for Bellbrook or Green County. Now, that's my position, and material to me how the, whatever comes out in Columbus, my position's not going to change. I don't care how it comes out in Columbus. We, as a council, have to take a position. Is it right or is it wrong? And I think it's wrong.
I mean, I don't disagree with your comments. My concern is, the city law director works for this council. He is our employee. Three people answer this, to this council, and they're all sitting at the table with us. And we have yet to have one meeting with our law director to discuss this matter, to try to find conclusion to this matter. Instead, we're going to take steps without even meeting with our employee to discuss these matters. And I keep being told that Jonathan, our attorney, says that we should not meet with this employee to discuss these matters. Well, if that's the case, then we probably shouldn't take these actions tonight until we meet with Jonathan and meet with our employee. And if it takes coming in on a Saturday to meet with our employee, meeting with our attorney, to find out what the proper resolution is to this matter, then we need to do it. But to this date, I've been asking for it for six months. It's not happened.
Councilman?
In all due respect, our law director knows what's going on. I mean, are you seriously, I've had a conversation with him two months ago.
And I have too.
And what's happened since then? What, has he done anything? I mean, I got to ask just a simple question. Has it fell on deaf ears? Well, I hate to bring this up in a public meeting, but we, we have a responsibility, the taxpayers of Xenia, to oversee our budget and our employees. You're right. And we hire the finance director, city manager, and law director, and they're going to do as we want them to do.
So don't you think as an employee of this council-
Stop, please. Councilman? Stop, please.
No, I believe I have the floor.
No, I have my hand up. You spoke without asking.
I'm recognizing Councilwoman Mills, please.
Thank you. At this time, I agree with the motion. I believe that it is very clear, in my opinion, that, I agree with Councilman Lauterback, that at this time period, that we need to make sure that our responsibilities is to deal with the taxpayers' money and how it is distributed. And so I just want to go on record saying that I agree with this.
Thank you. Councilman?
And I work for the taxpayers, too. And I want to do what's right for their money. But I don't think there's one of us at this table that can actually say they know what's going on down the hall there in the law department. Why? Because we have yet to have that first meeting with our employee to discuss it.
Councilman, we have had a meeting with the law director much earlier in the year, you might recall, and to your other-
We did not discuss that specific topic.
Councilman, I now have the floor. And I have responded to your concerns in a prior email that you had issued to me and that I had shared with the body of council. And while it is true, I have denied calling such a meeting, I have denied calling such a meeting for one specific aspect that you wish to discuss, that is, according to our external legal counsel, incredibly dangerous for the city of Xenia and us as a council to broach with someone who has a valid and legal personal contract. I am perfectly willing to meet with individuals, any of our appointed officials, to discuss any subject. But that which I have guidance on not to discuss, because it could put the city into a negative position, I will not call that meeting if that is an item to be discussed.
So we're going to take action-
We are clarifying intent.
Not knowing any of the consequences of what these actions are going to hap, what's going to happen after we take this action.
We are clarifying intent. I am not directing any particular appointed official or city department to take specific action, other than we are issuing guidance that is our intent for how council, from a policy perspective, expects that city employees will be used. Any other comments, please? Seeing none, roll call.
Vice President Long.
Yes.
Councilman Cow.
No.
Councilman Lauterback.
Yes.
Councilman Smith.
Yes.
Councilwoman Mills.
Yes.
Mayor Bayless.
Aye.
President Engel.
I'll join you. Aye.
Motion carried.
Couldn't let her be left out by herself. In regards to a second motion, that first motion requires some additional expansion. As for the second motion, I move that city employees shall only charge time and be compensated for tasks that are not exclusive and organic to the city of Xenia when there are sufficient external resources available and received by the city. Can I have a second on that, please?
I'll second that.
Second by Councilman Lauterback. Discussion or question on the second motion? Councilman?
Just to clarify for the public, I don't disagree that we have some issues within a department in this city that needs to be taken care of. What I disagree with is how we are going about dealing with those issues, and the fact that we, as a body, have not had one meeting with our employee to discuss it. Thank you.
Councilman?
Just want to clarify, the city law director has contracts personally with the county in Bellbrook. Those checks are cut directly to him for the services that this council has not changed that previous councils have allowed. The issue on the table today is if additional city resources and employees can be used on those actions and those contracts on our legal counsel. That's what we're being directed, that we have the right to set our policies of how additional labor and expenses are used. We're not appealing those contracts, although unfortunately, they may come out that way.
Thank you. Any other comments, please? Roll call, please.
Vice President Long.
Yes.
Councilman Cow.
No.
Councilman Lauterback.
Aye.
Councilman Smith.
Aye.
Councilwoman Mills.
Aye.
Mayor Bayless.
Aye.
President Engel.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Thank you, fellow council members. I think we've already given the audience much more than they may have wanted to hear on this particular issue, but just wanted to add once again for emphasis. This is not to address any specific situation. This is to set policy and intent for council regarding how city employees will make use of time that they are expending and that we are paying them to do for specifically the City of Xenia. From that perspective, I, and I believe this council recognizes that these motions will require the development of an implementation policy by the city's appointed officials. As such, Mr. City Manager, please lead the effort to develop an implementation policy that documents and expands on where necessary the terms found within the approved motions. Please describe any circumstances, for example, such as city employees participating in community events, that may warrant exceptions to the policy. Please deliver this policy for council consideration by or before our first scheduled meeting in December. And finally, colleagues, I would request that since you've passed these two motions, and there is complexity with them, I would ask in consideration of that, that the development of this requested implementation policy, and to ensure uniformity across our city departments, I would further move that the two motions we just approved by vote take effect the first pay period in January 2015, giving our city manager and other appointed officials an opportunity to develop the policy and determine its implementation. May I have a second to that?
Second.
Second by the Vice President. Discussion or question on this motion, please? Seeing none, roll call?
Vice President Long.
Aye.
Councilman Cowp.
No.
Councilman Lauterback.
Aye.
Councilman Smith.
Aye.
Councilwoman Mills.
Aye.
Mayor Bayless.
Aye.
President Engel.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Anything else from my colleagues, please? Seeing none, moving to reports of city offices. Mr. City Manager, you have practically the entire alphabet in front of you.
Robust agenda tonight, so let's get to it. We begin this evening with a request for passage as an emergency of an ordinance to purchase property at 1845 U.S. Route 68 North, in the amount of $96,620.24, and to authorize the execution of purchased documents for said. As council will recall, it's been a long-term safety and security goal for the city's water treatment system to secure the residential properties located adjacent to behind the current plant. Once all properties have been acquired, additional steps for securing the plant will be undertaken, as has been detailed in prior five-year capital plans.
Thank you very much. May I have a motion, please, as an emergency for purchase?
So moved.
Moved by Councilman Lauterback, seconded by the mayor. Any discussion or question on the motion, please? I'm very pleased to see this moving forward at this point in time. Certainly will expand our security at our water plant. Roll call, please.
Vice President Long.
Aye.
Councilman Cowp.
Aye.
Councilman Lauterback.
Aye.
Councilman Smith.
Aye.
Councilwoman Mills.
Aye.
Mayor Bayless.
Aye.
President Engel.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you.
Next item this evening is a housekeeping step to correct a simple error and provide final payment to Imagination of gain. In September, the Development Department received an invoice, the envelope for which was marked "final invoice." Staff in the Development Department moved to close out the PO for Imagination because of this. In October, we received an additional invoice, which is in fact the final invoice, but since the purchase order had already been closed, the vendor, additional action by council is required for this final payment. As required, staff request passage of a resolution as an emergency to authorize payment of[848.77][849.02]$5,650 on the then-announced statement to Imagination for services rendered.
Thank you. May I have a motion, please, as an emergency?
So moved as an emergency.
Moved by Councilman Cowp. Second, please.
Second.
Second by Councilman Lauterback. Any discussion or question on this motion, please? Councilman?
I should have called it earlier, but this is gain?
Imagination is half of...
Can I ask a question? Am I allowed to?
No.
But it's for the services.
What was the amount?
Fifty-six fifty.
Fifty-six fifty?
Fifty-six fifty is the amount that's in the report. It's much less than that, right?
No.
Please.
I think that's the remaining amount.
I was going to say, and to clarify, this particular contract...
Yes.
There's actually three different funding sources, and there was multiple POs. That is the amount that is needed in order to completely pay the invoice you provided.
I see what you're saying. The unmentioned part is already covered, and so the expedition...
Correct. That's correct.
I apologize. I just, I didn't want you to go through the problem of dealing with all of it and then have it do wrong and start over. And I apologize. And thank you for...
Oh, no, we never start over. We just add.
Thank you very much for being able to guide us for sure.
Any other questions?
I have not heard that particular name before. I have never related to you.
Roll call, please.
Vice President Long.
Aye.
Councilman Cowp.
Aye.
Councilman Lauterback.
Aye.
Councilman Smith.
Aye.
Councilwoman Mills.
Aye.
Mayor Bayless.
Aye.
President Engel.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Next this evening is a series of actions requested by council that will allow staff to move forward with provision of our health and dental benefit programs for fiscal year 2015. As council is aware, staff has spent considerable time and effort seeking ways to minimize or reduce our collective financial liability for insurance coverage, while also seeking to limit any reductions in coverage levels. It's with great pleasure tonight that we present actions to city council that will accomplish these goals for insurance plan year 2015. The first action requested is authorization to accept the rates as presented in your published agenda report and to authorize execution of an agreement with United Healthcare for third-party administration and stop-loss coverage in the amount of $322,814.52 for the city's self-funded health insurance coverage for coverage year beginning January 1st, 2015. This action will allow us to move forward with our recommended self-insurance program maintaining current premium splits and levels of coverage. Second action, request authorization to maintain our current yearly contribution rates for the HSA at $1,500 for a single option, $3,500 for all other tier options, and authorizes continuation of our current working dependent surcharge of $200 per pay and compensation in lieu of benefits for the opt-out program not to exceed $10,000 per single and $20,000 per family. Again, these consistent with the program elements from this year, which have been quite successful. The third action is a request for authorization to accept the rates as presented for dental coverage for the 2015 and 2016 calendar years, with superior dental beginning January 1st of 2015. This includes a 3% rate increase over current, but locks the rate in for a two-year period. Fourth action, request authorization to execute an agreement for the Teladoc 24/7 physician consultation services, which would be a new benefit provided to our employees, and we believe will also have the secondary advantage of reducing our minor office visit expenses incurred within our health coverage, health insurance coverage, I should say. And the final action requested is an introduction of an ordinance to amend Part II Administration Code Title VI Administration, Chapter 236, Department of Finance, to create a self-insurance internal service fund to account for health insurance activity within our finance, financial system. Once executed, these actions will enable us to launch our open enrollment period for healthcare benefits and allow us to move forward with plan year 2015 health coverage.
Thank you very much. May I have a motion, please, first, to authorize the city manager to accept the rates and execute an agreement with United Healthcare?
So moved.
Moved by the mayor. Second, please?
Second.
Second by the Vice President. Any discussion or question on this motion, please? Seeing none, roll call?
Vice President Long.
Aye.
Councilman Cowp.
Aye.
Councilman Lauterback.
Aye.
Councilman Smith.
Aye.
Councilwoman Mills.
Abstain.
Mayor Bayless.
Aye.
President Engel.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Now, a motion, please, to authorize the city to maintain its yearly contribution rates for HSAs? Moved by Councilman Lauterback. Second, please?
Second.
Second by the mayor. Any discussion or question on this motion, please? Councilman?
Thank you very much. This motion also includes dependent surcharge, $200 per day, and compensation in lieu of benefits, which is our opt-out, not to exceed $10,000 per single individual, $20,000 per family. That's the money that employee management services pays our employees not to take our benefits. Correct, City Manager?
Those are city funds. They're not funds for EMS, but yes, that is part of the program for which they are responsible for...
And the goal of EMS is to move those employees where?
The goal of EMS is to provide services to enable employees to select the best option available to them in terms of healthcare coverage. That may include external options from the marketplace, or may include options that would be available through employee spouse.
Correct. Or Medicare, or wherever.
Whatever options are available to them.
I've been the lone wolf on this subject. I'm the lone wolf on a lot of stuff, so I'm okay with it. I voted against this every single time. I pulled a healthcare reform bulletin today. Agencies prohibit all employer reimbursements of individual premiums. Could it be argued we're not reimbursing somebody for their individual premiums? Possibly. But at the end of the day, that's what we're doing. We're employing EMS services at $130,000 over the last two years to take our high-risk individuals and move them from our plan onto an individual plan, a spouse's plan, Medicare, Medicaid, whatever the options may be. We have one family in this city that works for this city that got almost $20,000 not to take our healthcare. I was told they went to the individual market. Right here on the healthcare reform bulletin, all employer arrangements that reimburse employees for individual premiums violate the ACA market reforms. November 16th, 2014, Departments of Labor, Health and Human Services, Department of Treasury issued FAQ guidance clarifying that these arrangements do not comply with ACA market reforms and may subject employers to penalties. These arrangements may trigger an excise tax of $100 per day for each employee. Once again, I think what we're doing is wrong. On the back here, employees with high-risk claims. The FAQs also clarify that an employer cannot offer a choice between enrollment in a standard group plan or cash-only to high-risk, cash-only to employees with high claims risk. This practice constitutes unlawful discrimination based on one or more health factors in violation of the federal nondiscrimination laws. Now, there's another paragraph, too. I'm not going to read. Could it be argued that, well, we're not discriminating because we're offering it to everybody? Probably so. But when EMS services sits down with our employees, they have the ability to offer this employee more money than this employee based on their needs and how much claims history they believe they have on our plan. So therefore, once again, I think we are walking such a fine line of being uncompliant to doing the wrong thing that I'm voting no again, because I don't believe what we're doing is lawful. I don't believe it's right for the employees. As much as I want our healthcare costs to come down, I believe we're going about it the wrong way.
Mr. City Manager? In regards to the interviews that EMS does, is it true that they are all voluntary?
We require them to...
Excuse me? It's voluntary for them to opt-in, opt-out?
Correct. Well, we require employees to have a consultation with EMS. And of course, that includes more than just discussion about the opt-out program, discussion about the overall rate structure, and, you know, any changes to coverage increments, that sort of thing should they occur. I'm trying to get back to your original question. The, in terms of participation in the program, it is a volunteer participation in the program. If they have, with regard to their spousal, the waiver, if they have an alternative available to them, they can choose not to exercise that alternative, and then the $200 fee is applicable, just to recoup some of the additional expense. And frankly, to encourage them to exercise that option, because it's hurting the city's finances and hurting our ability to provide, you know, good coverage because of the cost.
But it is voluntary.
Come on. It's going to be beneficial to them, too.
It is voluntary, but I would argue that under ACA law, and it says right here, that you cannot reimburse and move someone from a group chassis product to an individual product.
I think you said the key word there, "remove." I don't think anyone is removing themselves from this, other than the individual through a voluntary choice.
I stated it wrong. You cannot reimburse an employee to go from a group chassis product to an individual product. And what we are doing is reimbursing that employee for those premiums in the fee in lieu of benefits, because we reimburse them at whatever it's going to cost them on the open market to get an individual policy. That's how EMS determines how much a family gets.
Do we have a written legal opinion on such a matter?
Not aware of the specifics to what Councilman Lauterback is referring to, word generally...
That's Cowp.
And at that note, it's 8:30.
It's been a long day. Probably match my tires. At this point, you know, my recommendation is we stick, we stay on course until we're given a cease and desist from the federal government. Frankly, my opinion, ACA in and of itself is unconstitutional now. Our Supreme Court has decided that it's a tax and not a personal intrusion, so we have to live with that. The program that we have instituted and have engaged in so far is designed to provide maximum choices, maximum benefits, and not to penalize employees, but to incentivize their exercise of options. A lot of what's decided in many of these bulletins are issues that are still being fedded through the process. There's so little detail in terms of actionable implementation and case law, and in many cases, regulations that are still being worked out. You know, at some point, who knows? Who knows what changes are made that may provide limitations? But, you know, this is something that we try to stay on top of. I know the HR director is consistently monitoring a lot of these things that come out. She attends some of the different seminars. The rules are constantly changing. But to our knowledge, the format, the program that we've laid out is lawful, and, you know, again, I would encourage council to engage in the process until we're told otherwise.
I will be voting yes for this particular motion. I would like to see, because I had not seen those particular paragraphs in law before, I would like to see some study be put to that, please, and provide us with a written opinion so that we can move forward in any way, shape, or form.
You're going to need to consult a healthcare lawyer. It's a very, very specialized area, and there's nobody in this room that's qualified to write that opinion, or interpret it. I mean, it needs to go to a healthcare lawyer, and they need to write that opinion.
Okay. Let us discuss offline, then, how we will proceed, because I am very interested in providing a maximum amount of benefit to our citizens, a maximum amount of benefit to our budget. But obviously, as a council, we are bound to uphold the law. And I am curious as to how this would be looked at, appreciating all that you've said, Mr. City Manager, about a lot of this still being cured, like the Hoover Dam, concrete is still curing. Any other comments on motion two, please? Seeing none, roll call?
Vice President Long.
Aye.
Councilman Cowp.
No.
Councilman Lauterback.
Aye.
Councilman Smith.
Aye.
Councilwoman Mills.
Abstain.
Mayor Bayless.
Aye.
President Engel.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Now, a motion, please, to authorize the city manager to accept rates as presented for dental coverage for 2015 and 2016.
So moved.
Moved by Councilman Smith. Second, please.
Second.
Second by Councilman Lauterback. Any discussion or question on this motion, please? Seeing none, roll call?
Vice President Long.
Aye.
Councilman Cowp.
Aye.
Councilman Lauterback.
Aye.
Councilman Smith.
Aye.
Councilwoman Mills.
Abstain.
Mayor Bayless.
Aye.
President Engel.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Motion for authorize the city manager to execute an agreement for Teladoc. Moved and seconded by Councilman Cowp and Lauterback, respectively. Any discussion or question on this motion, please?
I just...
Councilman Cowp.
Selling Teladoc programs myself, I think it's imperative that our broker get involved in this process, to educate the employees, to make sure that they register right away. And because if they don't register right away, they're not going to use it, and it's not going to benefit the city. And but if the employees do use it, they use it once, they'll love it, and it'll be But if the employees do use it, they use it once, they'll love it, and it'll be a benefit to the city.
Thank you very much. Any other comment or question, please? Seeing none, roll call.
Vice President Long.
Aye.
Councilman Cal.
Aye.
Councilman Lauterback.
Aye.
Councilman Smith.
Aye.
Councilwoman Mills.
Abstain.
Mayor Bayless.
Aye.
President Engel.
Aye.
Motion carried.
And a final motion, excuse me, final is an introduction ordinance to amend Part II of our administrative code, please? Introduced by Councilman Lauterback.
Oh, sorry.
Nope, we're on track. Thank you very much.
Ask one question.
Please.
Who was our United Healthcare Broker?
Our Highland.
Highland?
Oh, Susan Walker.
The company, who's the company?
Highland.
Highland is the...
Yeah.
Susan Walker is the representative. The next item in this marathon is seeks introduction of a resolution to amend the Xenia Employee Benefits Manual Policies 3.06 Longevity Benefits and 3.10 Health and Dental Insurance and to approve the addition of EMB 3.13 Re-Hired Retirees. Approval of the resolution would enact the following. Under longevity benefits, would revoke part-time employee eligibility, recognize prior part-time, seasonal, or temporary service upon full-time employment, exclude prior service credit for re-employed retirees, and establish retirement as the only separation of employment eligible for a prorated longevity payment. With the health and dental insurance provisions, employees under retire/rehire status would have their insurance premium contributions reset to be reflective of the standard in place at the time of re-employment. And third, EMB Policy 3.13 would establish a new policy direction on retire/rehire arrangements for city employment.
Thank you. May I have an introduction of the resolution, please?
So introduced.
Introduced by Councilman Lauterback. Thank you.
Next this evening's request for introduction of three ordinances as recommended by the Xenia Traffic Commission and endorsed by the Engineering Department. The first ordinance would prohibit parking along the south side of West Ankeny Mill Road from the center line of North King Street to a point 84 feet to the west. The second ordinance would establish and clarify speed limit on Bellbrook Avenue between Allison and West Second Street at 25 miles per hour. And the third ordinance would amend Xenia Codified Ordinance 432.11, U-turns restricted by removing Section 432.11D, making the code consistent with the Ohio Revised Code.
Thank you very much. May I have an introduction of the first ordinance prohibiting parking?
So introduced.
Introduced by Councilman Lauterback. Now, an introduction, please, for the ordinance to establish the posted speed limit of 25 miles per hour.
Introduced.
Introduced by Councilwoman Mills. Now, I'm at it. And third action, introduction of an ordinance to amend Xenia's codified ordinance.
So moved.
Introduced by Councilman Smith. Thank you very much.
Item F on your agenda this evening seeks a motion for transfer of funds from line 270-1221-55599 to 270-1222-55621, an amount equaling $21,422 to cover new depreciation amounts related to the Mark's system upgrades. As detailed in your agenda report, there is no additional financial liability related to this action, rather it is necessary accounting step to properly track and qualify these expenses related to the depreciation cost assessed during accounting.
Thank you very much. May I have a motion, please, to transfer the funds?
So moved.
Moved by the mayor, seconded by Councilman Smith. Any discussion or question on this motion, please? Seeing none, roll call.
Vice President Long.
Aye.
Councilman Cal.
Aye.
Councilman Lauterback.
Aye.
Councilman Smith.
Aye.
Councilwoman Mills.
Abstain.
Mayor Bayless.
Aye.
President Engel.
Aye.
Motion carried.
And a final motion, excuse me, final is an introduction ordinance to amend Part II of our administrative code, please? Introduced by Councilman Lauterback.
Oh, sorry.
Nope, we're on track. Thank you very much.
Ask one question.
Please.
Who was our United Healthcare Broker?
Our Highland.
Highland?
Oh, Susan Walker.
The company, who's the company?
Highland.
Highland is the...
Yeah.
Susan Walker is the representative. The next item in this marathon is seeks introduction of a resolution to amend the Xenia Employee Benefits Manual Policies 3.06 Longevity Benefits and 3.10 Health and Dental Insurance and to approve the addition of EMB 3.13 Re-Hired Retirees. Approval of the resolution would enact the following. Under longevity benefits, would revoke part-time employee eligibility, recognize prior part-time, seasonal, or temporary service upon full-time employment, exclude prior service credit for re-employed retirees, and establish retirement as the only separation of employment eligible for a prorated longevity payment. With the health and dental insurance provisions, employees under retire/rehire status would have their insurance premium contributions reset to be reflective of the standard in place at the time of re-employment. And third, EMB Policy 3.13 would establish a new policy direction on retire/rehire arrangements for city employment.
Thank you. May I have an introduction of the resolution, please?
So introduced.
Introduced by Councilman Lauterback. Thank you.
Next this evening's request for introduction of three ordinances as recommended by the Xenia Traffic Commission and endorsed by the Engineering Department. The first ordinance would prohibit parking along the south side of West Ankeny Mill Road from the center line of North King Street to a point 84 feet to the west. The second ordinance would establish and clarify speed limit on Bellbrook Avenue between Allison and West Second Street at 25 miles per hour. And the third ordinance would amend Xenia Codified Ordinance 432.11, U-turns restricted by removing Section 432.11D, making the code consistent with the Ohio Revised Code.
Thank you very much. May I have an introduction of the first ordinance prohibiting parking?
So introduced.
Introduced by Councilman Lauterback. Now, an introduction, please, for the ordinance to establish the posted speed limit of 25 miles per hour.
Introduced.
Introduced by Councilwoman Mills. Now, I'm at it. And third action, introduction of an ordinance to amend Xenia's codified ordinance.
So moved.
Introduced by Councilman Smith. Thank you very much.
Item F on your agenda this evening seeks a motion for transfer of funds from line 270-1221-55599 to 270-1222-55621, an amount equaling $21,422 to cover new depreciation amounts related to the Mark's system upgrades. As detailed in your agenda report, there is no additional financial liability related to this action, rather it is necessary accounting step to properly track and qualify these expenses related to the depreciation cost assessed during accounting.
Thank you very much. May I have a motion, please, to transfer the funds?
So moved.
Moved by the mayor, seconded by Councilman Smith. Any discussion or question on this motion, please? Seeing none, roll call.
Vice President Long.
Aye.
Councilman Cal.
Aye.
Councilman Lauterback.
Aye.
Councilman Smith.
Aye.
Councilwoman Mills.
Aye.
Mayor Bayless.
Aye.
President Engel.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Final item on the agenda this evening is follow-up to previous actions requested by council. We present recommendations for the award of community funding program grants the remaining amount. Staff request a motion to approve the round two community funding program grants as follows. Green County Circles, $1,000 to fund one family through the Circles program for one year. Xenia Area Community Theater, $1,800 for repairs to masonry and HVAC system. Three would be Jeremiah Tree, $2,000 for purchase of computer systems, hardware and software for client assistance. And four Advocates for animals, $2,000 for operating funds for the Spay and Ford program. At this time, staff is not prepared to present final legislative changes to amend Chapter 226.03 Community Funding Guidelines. The amendments have been drafted, but due to pretty busy schedules in our office as well as the Law Department, we have yet to have sufficient time to review these changes together. As there's no urgency for enacting these changes presently, my plan is to bring this back for council's consideration after the first of the year. Thank you very much. May I have a motion, please?
I'm sorry. I don't have that.
It was there, I think it's in our mailbox.
It's in our mailbox.
It's attached.
Yeah, and let me apologize, we got some...
Neil?
Because it got out a little bit late. And I know that the city clerk, it fell off the radar and didn't get sent out on Wednesdays we had hoped it would.
Did you mention First Friday?
I did not adhere. I did in the report. First Fridays was the other applicant. As instructed by council, we added a line item to the budget for $2,000 for assistance for that program. So my recommendation would be to deny that because we've already included that otherwise.
Okay.
Thank you.
Just one question. We talked about this earlier. Do we ask for a financial report from all these organizations?
There's a general, a very generalized requirement in the guidelines, but there's no specificity to it. One of the intentions that I had in conjunction with this program was to work to ensure financial accountability. So what I would do is task our assistant city manager with making sure that there's reporting on how those dollars are spent and some type of documentation to verify that.
Yeah, I think that's just good business, not that I don't trust any of these organizations. It's just good business. In the past, some of these organizations have shown us no accountability, and some have. So I think all of them need to show us accountability.
I would concur with that.
Thank you. Do I have a motion, please, to accept these recommendations for disbursement?
So moved.
Moved by Councilman Lauterback. Second, please?
Second.
Second by the vice president. Any discussion or question on this motion, please? Councilman Cal.
Thank you very much. After we opened it back up, how many people applied for the money?
We had a total of five applications. So the four you have, and I mentioned the one from, or actually, the mayor brought up the one from...
First Fridays.
First Fridays, thank you. I'll tell you, to be honest, I was disappointed. We did postings on our website, Facebook. We were in contact with a number of larger organizations that have sort of umbrella email lists. We exploded those. We contacted some of the various Senior Area Ministerial Association, for example, and used their email blast. We're struggling to get word out about not just this, but a lot of things, and I don't know how we fix that. I think some of that comes back to discussion earlier this evening in the work session about how our public relations and how we get word out. So I was a little disappointed in the overall response with this additional round. It just provided us with a good selection of options that I think are all worthy causes, but I would like to have seen a more robust response.
I think that what concerns me, though, is we had organizations that followed the procedure at the beginning of the year, and some of those organizations were not funding at all. And I think it's a disservice to the people that followed the program that was set in place. And we've got $9,000 to disperse here, and I think we could have funded those ones that originally asked for the money, along with some of these with a little bit of money, and not just cut those ones that followed the procedure out altogether.
Well, again, in looking at the recommendations that I've brought back, we tried to make sure that, under the current guidelines, that these recommendations would be compliant, but also given the feedback that council's provided in terms of scope of impact, the number of individuals who would benefit from and so forth, we've tried to also apply some of those same standards, looking prospectively toward where council's moving in terms of the guidelines based on the feedback that we had received previously. And just a point of clarification, too, I think there's $6,800 remaining, not the $9,000, because I think we gave away, we gave away about $3,000 before, and then, if you recall, there was, I think, a couple hundred dollars that we utilized that went toward, it was the debt?
Yeah, a hundred.
Then how'd you come up with the 25, 22, and 25 that are on the agenda item? That's what they requested.
Yeah, correct.
Right.
Yeah, we could not fund all of them based on what their request was. One, because we didn't have enough cash left.
There's $6,900 left, and $6,800 is going to be spent with these if council approves these.
And again, we could, for some of these requests, we could not fund them in their totality because it wouldn't be compliant with the current guidelines that are on the books. Good example of that is Xenia Area Community Theater. They had requested more than that, but the current guidelines for a project indicate that you can't, we can't fund more than 50% of that project, and the $1,800 is approximately 50% of that.
Mr. Vice President.
Which groups from the first round did we not fund?
I think we ended up giving each of the first three applicants funding.
Yes.
It wasn't the full original amount.
A thousand bucks, I think.
We did not.
I thought we did.
I think we retroactively, we came back for the third one.
Citywide, we came back because at first they did not qualify, but then we came back and said they did qualify.
We said they qualified, but did we give money?
Yes.
Given that there was $3,000 approximately expended, my recollection was the award was $1,000 per.
Correct. And that was citywide, the Xenia High School team, and...
Diamonds and Pearls.
Diamonds and Pearls, yeah.
Diamonds and Pearls. So the three dancing, what I was thrilled to see in the second round is not because I don't want to support the dancing, or anyone apply to these, but these programs, several of them, Jeremiah Tree, Xenia Circles, and Advocates for Animals are really helping to tackle issues in our neighborhood. Advocates for Animals and their Spay to Nuda program, which I always comment on the amount of cats that we pay for in our budget.
We spend $40,000, $60,000 a year with nuisance animals, and a lot of that's cats. So this is a fantastic use of these dollars for that.
And the First Fridays, Xenia Community Theater are great entertainment and things for our community, which our community absolutely loves. The support they show for these organizations are amazing. So thank you for taking care of this.
Any other questions or comments, please?
We still have BRAC taken care of, is that right?
Yeah, based on council's instructions, what we've done is put a $3,000 line item in the budget to provide funding for BRAC, a $2,000 line item for First Fridays, and we reduced the amount in the budget for next year for community funding to 5,000, just so that we weren't adding additional expense to the overall budget.
What about the basketball program?
That's a separate line item. That's a point of discussion we can have in the budget review. I believe currently, there's, I think, if I look, I think there's a $5,000 line item in there as a contribution to the basketball program.
And are they not using Simon Canton for practice?
They have last year. I don't think they're set to use it this year.
They've been requested.
At this point, so we can certainly entertain that when it comes back around. It is still my goal and my desire as part of implementation of some of the recommendations from Play Xenia, to look at how we can have better coordination among some of these programs, in particular basketball, because there is a lot of redundancy. We don't want to be in the business of forcing any of these entities to go, to not provide the service, but there may be a much better value if they can partner together.
Thank you.
Just as a comment for me, I am wholly supportive, and I greatly appreciate the city manager's office pulling this together, I think chiming on with my vice president, not to belabor the point. These are organizations that are out there doing something for the community at either very little or no cost to the community, and I am wholly supportive of that and believe that that fundamentally is what our citizens want us to do with community funding-type initiatives. I will unfortunately have to be abstaining on this particular topic, as my family and I are associated with a couple of them. We did not write their grant for them, just for the record, but we are affiliated with them, and I do not wish to create any sense of impropriety. So I will be abstaining at the vote. Any other comments, please? Roll call.
Vice President Long.
Aye.
Councilman Cal.
Aye.
Councilman Lauterback.
Aye.
Councilman Smith.
Aye.
Councilwoman Mills.
Aye.
Mayor Bayless.
Aye.
President Engel.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Now, a motion, please, to authorize City Manager to accept rates as presented for dental coverage for 2015 and 2016.
So moved.
Moved by Councilman Smith. Second, please?
Second.
Second by the vice president. Any discussion or question on this motion, please? Councilman Cal.
Thank you very much. After we opened it back up, how many people applied for the money?
We had a total of five applications, so the four you have, and I mentioned the one from, or actually, the mayor brought up the one from...
First Fridays.
First Fridays, thank you. I'll tell you, to be honest, I was disappointed. We did postings on our website, Facebook. We were in contact with a number of larger organizations that have sort of umbrella email lists. We exploded those. We contacted some of the various Senior Area Ministerial Association, for example, and used their email blast. We're struggling to get word out about not just this, but a lot of things, and I don't know how we fix that. I think some of that comes back to discussion earlier this evening in the work session about how our public relations and how we get word out. So I was a little disappointed in the overall response with this additional round. It just provided us with a good selection of options that I think are all worthy causes,
Xenia Community Theater, they had requested more than that, but the current guidelines for a project indicate that you can't, we can't fund more than 50% of that project in the 1800s, it is approximately 50% of that.
Mr. Vice President.
Which groups from the first round did we not fund?
I think we ended up giving each of the first three applicants funding.
Yes.
It wasn't the, it wasn't the full original amount.
A thousand bucks, I think.
We did not.
I thought we did.
I think one of, I think we retroactively, we came back for the third one.
Citywide, we came back, because at first they did not qualify, but then we came back and said they did qualify.
We said they qualified, but did we give money?
Yes.
Given that there was $3,000 approximately expended, my recollection was, the award was $1,000 per.
That's correct.
Right.
And that was Citywide, the Xenia High School team, and...
Diamonds and Pearls.
Diamonds and Pearls, yeah.
So the three dancing, what I was thrilled to see in the second round, it's not because I don't want to support the dancing, or anyone who applied to these, but these, these programs, several of them, Jeremiah Tree, Xenia Circles, and Advocates for Animals are really helping to tackle issues in our neighborhood, like Advocates for Animals and their spay to neuter program, which I always comment on the amount of cats that we pay for in our budget.
We spend forty, sixty thousand dollars a year with nuisance animals, and a lot of that's cats, so this is a fantastic use of these dollars for that.
And the First Fridays Xenia Community Theater are great entertainment and things for our community, which our community absolutely loves. The support they show for these organizations are amazing, so thank you for taking care of this.
Any other questions or comments, please?
We still have BRACDA taken care of, is that right?
Yeah, based on council's instructions, what we've done is put a $3,000 line item in the budget to provide funding for BRACDA, a $2,000 line item for First Fridays, and we reduced the amount in the budget for next year for community funding to 5,000, just so that we weren't adding additional expense to the overall budget.
What about the basketball program?
That's a separate line item, that's a point of discussion we can have in the budget review, I believe currently there's, if I think that looked, I think there's a $5,000 line item in there as a contribution to the basketball program.
And are they not using Simon Canton for practice?
They have last year, I don't think they're set to use it this year.
They haven't been requested.
At this, at this point, so, you know, we can certainly entertain that when, you know, when it comes back around. It is still my goal and my desire, as part of implementation of some of the recommendations from Playzenia, to look at how we can have better coordination among some of these programs, in particular basketball, because there is a lot of redundancy. You know, we don't want to be in the business of forcing any of these entities to go, you know, to not provide the service, but there may be a real, a much better value if they, if they can partner together.
Thank you.
Just as a comment for me, I am wholly supportive, and I greatly appreciate the city manager's office pulling this together, I think chiming on with my vice president, not to belabor the point, these are organizations that are out there doing something for the community at either very little or no cost to the community, and I am wholly supportive of that, and believe that that fundamentally is what our citizens want us to do with community funding type, type initiatives. I will unfortunately have to be, be abstaining on this particular topic, as my family and I are associated with a couple of them, we did not write their grant for them, just for the record, but we are affiliated with them, and I do not wish to create any sense of impropriety, so I will be abstaining at the vote. Any other comments, please? Roll call.
Vice President Long.
Aye.
Councilman Kow.
Aye.
Councilman Lauterback.
Aye.
Councilman Smith.
Aye.
Councilwoman Mills.
Aye.
Mayor Bayless.
Aye.
President Engel.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Abstain.
We've only been here three hours.
I've only been here three hours, I was only at work for nine, okay. My apologies.
Just a couple of brief closing thoughts, we have engaged in follow-up to the discussion, the last joint session with the Board of Education, we've engaged them in a meeting last week, had a real good discussion about some partnerships and possibly even with Central State, looking at cost-cutting and consolidation of services, so again, we're following up a number of the items that were discussed as part of that process. A ton of things going on, you may have noticed our schedule's been pretty busy in our office of late, lots of challenges, but some really positive things, and we spoke about some of them tonight, in particular to some development opportunities. One last thing I just wanted to note, we have a change in our office, did accept the resignation of our Assistant City Manager, and very pleased to introduce, and he's here and you didn't know I was going to do this, but Ryan Duke was officially appointed as our Assistant City Manager effective Wednesday. Ryan is a Xenia native and outstanding staff member who's served Mark Beislak in the Finance Department very well for a number of years. Mark's been very supportive of this, at least to the point that he almost ran me down with his car today. Just kidding, in all seriousness, Mark has been very supportive, we're, Ryan and I have committed to Mark, that we're going to make sure that we are covering all of his office's responsibilities, and in addition to covering, you know, the transition process in our office, it does us no good to have a, you know, you know, a deficit in the Finance Department, and so we're going to make sure that we, that we hook Mark up with a good replacement for Ryan, and we'll keep him covered until then, so some additional change, but I feel really good about where we're at and what it, what it votes for us moving forward, so.
Thank you, so that means sixteen hours a day for the gentleman, right?
If you want to reduce it to that, that's fine.
Oh, reduce it, well, thank you very much, welcome. Anything for the city manager this evening?
Just on that note, that leaves an opening, I saw the advertisement posted today, so as the comments earlier, if you're interested in applying to work for the city of Xenia with their openings.
Anything else for the city manager, please? Seeing none, Mr. Finance Director.
Thank you, Mr. President, a few items this evening, first of which, I'm asking for passage of an emergency resolution entering an agreement with US Bank for an amount not to exceed $183,486.22 to finance the purchase of a medic unit at a rate of 1.755% over a five-year period.
Thank you very much.
Our medic is expected to be delivered, I believe, next week, so we want to put the financing in place, so we can get that delivered.
Thank you very much, may I have a motion, please, as an emergency?
So moved.
Moved by Councilman Kow, second, please.
Second.
Second by the mayor, any discussion or question on the motion, please? Seeing none, roll call.
Vice President Long.
Aye.
Councilman Kow.
Aye.
Councilman Lauterback.
Aye.
Councilman Smith.
Aye.
Councilwoman Mills.
Aye.
Mayor Bayless.
Aye.
President Engel.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you.
Second item I have this evening is, and I'll try to be as brief as I possibly can on this item, council has seen this item before, this is an emergency resolution opposing the passage of Senate Bill 282, formerly House Bill Number Five, passed by the Ohio House, it has now moved on to the Senate, this is basically known as the Municipal Tax Uniformity Bill, I would probably call it something else. As most of council is aware, we've been opposing this legislation for a number of years now, it has now moved to the lame duck session of the legislature, it is in the Senate, and I think the Ways and Means Committee, they're hearing testimony next week, you know, proponent and I assume opponent testimony of the bill. The council receivable manager has done a review of the latest changes, still, and this is obviously an estimate, we, if passed as it exists today, anticipate a possibility of basically a loss in revenue or an additional expense of about $400,000 to, to our revenue stream, or an additional expense, as I said. This is on top of, as we're, as you are, and we're all well aware of, over the last number of years, reduction to the local government funds, the tune of almost half a million dollars over the last few years, elimination of the personal property tax, and then the reimbursement of such, couple hundred thousand dollars, elimination of the estate tax, average about $350,000 a year, so we're talking well over a million dollars a year, in terms of a reduction in our revenue stream from the state, and then on top of it, you know, we're looking at this $400,000. So we've talked earlier about jobs, which are extremely important for this community, I echo Councilman Lauterback's comments earlier, and there are obviously other benefits that you get from jobs, with citizens having the ability to get a good-paying job, however, when you look at it from the perspective of the Finance Office in part, where you're looking at our, our tax revenue stream, you know, we would look to need to basically get maybe over a thousand jobs, think of that, a thousand jobs, just to generate the dollars that, you know, has, have been reduced by the state. So, you know, part of that effort is toward economic development, but just think of, just think of that and put it in context. So we vehemently oppose this legislation, it was done under the context of uniformity, don't see too much uniformity, obviously you do, you can go one direction or another, and they've chosen to do the uniformity as such in the legislation, to reduce our revenue stream after already having revenue streams reduced, and I won't go any further, because I know it's late, but I'm asking for emergency passage, we're working on a draft cover letter to go to the various representatives and the governor, if council passes this resolution.
Thank you very much, may I have a motion, please, as an emergency?
So moved.
Moved by Councilwoman Mills, second.
Second.
Second by the mayor, by a no's. Any discussion or question on this motion, please? Councilman, Mr. Vice President, sorry, I'm really losing it this evening here.
They removed the resident requirement, that's not in this current version, or?
I believe that was part of, I think what was talked about, that's a different piece of legislation, I believe, yeah.
Just wanted to highlight one, one note, and there's several on here, I'm not going to go through, but one that says eliminate local control by requiring that we modify existing income tax ordinances, and follow all provisions of the Higher Rights Code. This, the staff report, basically this mandate would hand complete administrative control over to higher department taxation, leaving no discretion to municipalities that administrator, enforcement are reporting on that. I mean, in essence, if this would pass, you would no longer be paying the city of Xenia, you'd pay the state, and they would funnel it back, I'm sure, for a small percentage, like they do the current school taxes. I can't think of a time in our states, in my lifetime, I remember that funneling taxes to the state had ever really come back to the full force that they think that it should. I can think of school taxes, I can think of lottery, I can think of lots of other things that seem to get eaten up, so that alone, I'm not interested in giving local control to the state government.
But, Mr. Vice President, you posted something on Facebook, just within the last 24 hours, as I recall, that showed clearly, get it on camera, municipal employment, steady and down trend, state employment rapidly up in the last several years. Think very carefully about what our Finance Director has said, what our Vice President has said, you are in part funding that trend. If you support this particular activity, I would encourage every citizen, please write your state representative, or, not your representative, your state senator, at this point in time, and the governor, expressing your sentiment with the city of Xenia, that this not be passed.
And our state representative that they are to write to would be?
Senator Chris Widener.
Senator Chris Widener.
Springfield, Ohio.
Any other?
I want to mention you're from Xenia, however.
No return addresses.
Don't mention names, you know me.
Any other discussion or comment on this particular motion? Roll call, please.
Vice President Long.
Yes.
Councilman Kow.
Aye.
Councilman Lauterback.
Aye.
Councilman Smith.
Aye.
Councilwoman Mills.
Aye.
Mayor Bayless.
Aye.
President Engel.
Aye.
Motion carried. The next item I have is an introduction of four resolutions for the suspension of uncollectible utilities, uncollectible loans and grants, uncollectible city income tax, and uncollectible parking citations.
May I have an introduction, please, for the resolution authorizing suspension of uncollectible utilities?
So introduced.
Councilman Lauterback introduced, introduction of a resolution authorizing suspension of uncollectible loans and grants.
So introduced.
Councilman Lauterback, again, introduction of a resolution authorizing suspension of uncollectible city income tax.
So introduced.
Councilman Lauterback, sweep. Thank you very much.
The last item I have this evening, scheduled bills in the amount of $547,474.51.
Motion to pay our bills, please.
So moved.
Moved by the Vice President, second, please.
Second.
Second by Councilman Smith, any discussion or question on the bills, please? Seeing none, roll call.
Vice President Long.
Aye.
Councilman Kow.
Aye.
Councilman Lauterback.
Aye.
Councilman Smith.
Aye.
Councilwoman Mills.
Aye.
Mayor Bayless.
Aye.
President Engel.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Anything for the Finance Director this evening, please? Seeing none, Mr. Law Director.
Only one item this evening, second reading of an ordinance authorizing the transfer of one property identified as M40000200080012600, originally issued by Councilman Kow.
So moved, Mr. President.
Move for passage, second, please?
Second.
Second by Councilman Lauterback, by a no's. Any discussion or question on the motion, please? Seeing none, roll call.
Vice President Long.
Aye.
Councilman Kow.
Aye.
Councilman Lauterback.
Aye.
Councilman Smith.
Aye.
Councilwoman Mills.
Aye.
Mayor Bayless.
Aye.
President Engel.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you, nothing further.
Anything for the Law Director this evening, please? Seeing none, Mr. City Manager, any update to our summary of action items, I believe you've taken at least two this evening to be added.
Correct, I think we're all up to date, I will just note the last one, I do have a meeting scheduled, superintendent with a number of follow-up items, and that'll be one of the items that we discussed, and see if we can get implemented, probably after the first meeting.
Thank you very much, anything from my colleagues regarding the action items? Seeing none, reading of communications and discussion, Councilman Smith, please.
Thank you, Mr. President, I did want to say, I did get three to four letters or emails from Michelle Johnson of citizens interested in serving on traffic commission, so it must be the most popular, right, so all those people want to serve, so we'll be, we'll be talking with them, and that last traffic meeting, that was November 3rd, so I wasn't able to attend my local area parks meeting, I guess they everybody, they went well, we'll talk to you more about that later. I just want to mention a couple of things for a friend of mine, that there is a Christmas extravaganza this Saturday, November 15th, from 9:00 to 5:00, at the Schindler Center, and their theme is live here and shop here in Xenia, they'll have some local businesses and some vendors, they're from 9:00 to 5:00, so if you want to do some early Christmas shopping, support some local businesses, they have been sponsored by, some area businesses have chipped in to help defray a lot of the cost of this expense, they are asking for a, a very small, $2 per person donation for admission, or a can or two of food, non-perishable food, that's going to go to a local food pantry, and with the weather turning a lot colder, I just want to remind those that have pets, that their water bowls are probably frozen outside, so make sure you take care of your pets, give them some fresh water if they're outside, they've got a lot of fur, I'm sure that they're not hurting yet, but their water's frozen, so just wanted to mention that, and just to thank everybody for watching tonight, thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilman Kow.
Thank you very much, I was able to attend the team for the curse of the town out at Central State University tonight, so want to thank them for hosting that, also would like to thank Dr. Jackson, the president of Central State University.
Hammond, Jackson Hammond.
Oh, Jackson Hammond, I'm sorry.
Sorry.
And the athletic director, Jahan Kolbreth, Xenia Youth Athletic Association, Wee Bucks, we've partnered with the Central State University for the last two years, we just completed our second season out there, it's been a phenomenal relationship, and when I meet with the president of the university, and she wants to welcome us back with open arms, and is as excited about the whole opportunity that's out there as we are, that's always refreshing, so really want to thank CSU from our board, and me personally, for everything they've done for our organization, thank you very much.
Councilwoman Mills.
Thank you, after I have my short coughing fit, I wanted to invite everyone to the Home Spun Christmas, it will be this weekend at the Fairgrounds, and they will be having a silent auction there, and it will be benefiting X-out hunger, so please come and support the vendors, everything there is homemade, so it's a one-of-a-kind, unique gift, so please come to the Fairgrounds this weekend for our hometown Christmas.
Time.
I don't have a time, just, just look at the Fairgrounds thing, I'm sorry. Secondly, I wanted to say that I received an invitation, as did the mayor, we went to Veterans Day at Hospitality Center for rehab, and it was quite interesting for me, 10 years ago, I had a young man on BRACDA, he was the student representative from Xenia High School, and now he is a director of Conge Services, and his name is Kyle Hatfield, so here's a Xenia grad that came back and is working here in our community, and I'm very pleased and happy to have Kyle back, and I had a wonderful time, you handed out 16, 16 plaques to the veterans there, and it was quite a wonderful opportunity to give appreciation to those who served for us. And again, I want to invite everyone to the movie Frozen, December 5th, at 6:30, at the indoor location of Faith Community Church, and please come and join Elsa, Anna, and Olaf. That's all I have.
Thank you very much, Councilman Lauterback.
I have nothing.
Thank you, mayor.
Thank you, let me see, I'm going to skip some things, and I never give you everything, I do, there wouldn't be time enough at all, but I do want to focus on Tyler Washington, I issued him a proclamation, Tyler played soccer at Xenia High School, and he received all conference honors in the Great Western Ohio Conference, also the South Division, each year while he was in high school, he finished in the top 10 for scoring goals in his last three years, he played at Cincinnati State, and he left Monday to play professional soccer in Orbro, Sweden, his family had a special celebration at the Fairgrounds, and his mom had to get out of the hospital just to attend that, promising that she'd go back after it was over, so it was a wonderful evening, and just really great, a great story, and an inspirational story, to hear Tyler talk about that being his lifelong dream, and now he's a professional, he'll be in Sweden for a year. Applebee's had their grand reopening, and so that was really good, and really, they've changed the insides quite, well, completely, I guess, but it's, it's really great, and also a ribbon cutting at Our Family Soap, right on Detroit Street, and they have me hooked now on their soap, I love that soap. I attended a joint convocation that was presented by Central State University and Clark State University, the two, Clark State, the two are partnering, and they featured Dr. Freeman Robrowski, and he is the president of the University of Maryland, and it was just outstanding, and they had the students come, and they were involved, and he just did an excellent job. Then I want to commend the Xenia High School, the superintendent and staff, for the presentation they did on Saturday, a suicide program, and they have tips for managing stress, and one of the things that I think is really important, that if you are depressed, and if you are, and not even as far as feeling suicide, suicidal, but just feeling depressed, there are people that you can call upon, so if you ever get to that place, just know that there is help out there. And then I went to the, attended Our East End Community Meeting, and that was held on Monday, and it was the best turnout so far, there were 54 who actually signed in, and so it was a good meeting, a lot of questions, and I just appreciate all who came out to that meeting, and Mr. Scrivens was there as well. And along the lines of talking about having African-Americans be involved in the city, and on police and fire, and I think both of us have the same issue, it's not that we want anybody that's not qualified, we want anyone who is qualified, but certainly to, if you're qualified, to be a part of the interview process, so. Attended the dedication of the cemetery at the former OSNSO home, now the AIA campus, and that was really, really good, it was, it was a packed house, and it was such a good reminder, the gentleman who, who was master ceremony, actually graduated from the OSNSO home, and he's very successful now, and there are just so many success stories about the children who went through the school, and now are very productive citizens, which reminds me of our family friend, Colonel Paul Green, he's, he's a colonel, and he was a commander at an Air Force Base in California, and so there's just one story after another about the great contributions that the kids grew up, graduated, and have made. Oh, I do have a letter that I want to read, just the first part, and this came, came to me, and it's, it, it actually went to the commissioners, and it was copied to me and a number of other state, and state representatives, and Senator Widener, but anyway, I was pleased, because it says, this is informing you that the property at 194 East Church Street, which is our Xenia Carnegie Library, is being considered by the State Historic Site Preservation Advisory Board for nomination to the National Register of Historic Places, and I just think that's outstanding, you know, we know it's in bad condition, and we know they want to tear it down, but now with this, there'll be funding, and it can be fixed, and we can preserve this great historical monument, I call it, in Xenia. And then on the lighter side, you know, I deliver these beautification awards to all the, the people who are, who, who do receive them, and so my neighbor is in love with my little dog, so I, I put the beautification award, she works so hard on her yard, so I put the beautification award, I tied it on my dog, and had him take it over, of course, he couldn't make it up the steps with it, with it on it, but she was just so pleased, yeah, she was just so pleased, but it just goes to show the joy that these people have for these beautification awards, and when I went to her home another time, she had already framed it and had it in her, her living room, just so proud to have received it, so I really do thank the people of Xenia for the pride they take in their properties, and, and the work that's involved in maintaining those properties. And Home Spun Christmas is on Saturday the 15th, from 9:00 to 3:00. And then the only other thing I have, will we be giving a letter of support to the Red Cross, our local chapter?
It's council's desire, I would suggest a motion, and we can do so.
Well, I would like to.
Make that motion?
Make that motion.
May I have a second, please?
Second.
Second by Councilman Kow, discussion or question on the motion, please? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Vice President Long.
Aye.
Councilman Kow.
Aye.
Councilman Lauterback.
Aye.
Councilman Smith.
Aye.
Councilwoman Mills.
Aye.
Mayor Bayless.
Aye.
President Engel.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you.
I'm through, thank you.
Mr. Vice President.
I had to be impressed, because I think that certificate has to be twice the size of your dog. Spunk, hopefully you got a lot of spunk.
Yeah.
Just two items, one, I just want to remind everyone that we still have a couple days to enjoy the Xenia Restaurant Week specials, and the local restaurants participating this year are the Grill on the Hill, which is actually the WG, the golf course restaurant, Nick's, Willie's, and Sweet Boutique's, along with our neighbors in Spring Valley, the Savory Skill, which I've heard very positive things about, on Facebook I saw that, they're also participating in Xenia Restaurant Week. The only other thing is, I enjoyed attending the, the Parks Forum on the west side of town, there at McKinley School where I live, I live close to McKinley School, although I feel like I do live there sometimes, it was encouraging to see so much positivity about the city, and the parks, there was a lot of conversations about individual parks, but also about the broader picture of our rec center, and I was kind of encouraged about the willingness of a lot of citizens, there were about 30 there that night, their willingness to consider all types of funding models to, to improve our recreational situation, so opened my eyes on, on a couple of things, too.
Thank you. Thank you very much, I have just two items, one, passed a note by Councilwoman Mills, Faith Community is having a bazaar, the 21st and 22nd of November, from 6:00 to 9:00 on the 21st, and from 10:00 to 3:00 on the 22nd, this is a large event, again, indoors, thank goodness, this time of year, where a number of vendors will be in, spread throughout the community center there, that's towards the, the back of their property, and you will get a wide range of crafts, candles, and all sorts.
There's a cookie walk.
And there's a cookie walk, too. available for a very reasonable cost made by someone from within the church. And the last out of my head is just, I was very dismayed this afternoon, as I drove away from Wright Patterson, to find snow everywhere on my car. The point here is that Zinnia, the weather has changed once again. I know that we all in Ohio have seasonal amnesia regarding how to drive on snow, but the weather is upon us, and please take a little extra time, take a lot of extra time if you need to. Let's all stay safe on the roadways as we obviously head into a snow and icy time of year again, although much too early. If nothing else from my colleagues, I'd ask for a motion to adjourn, please. Moved by Councilman Kow. Second, please.
Second.
Second by the Vice President. I don't even have to ask if there's any discussion. Roll call, please.
Vice President Long.
Aye.
Councilman Kow.
Aye.
Councilman Lauterback.
Aye.
Councilman Smith.
Aye.
Councilwoman.
Aye. Say aye.
Councilwoman Mills.
Aye.
Mayor Bayless.
Aye.
President Engel.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you. [music]